Good morning, Chair.
Good now?
We're good, Dan. Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Come, let's see.
Good evening. Today is January 7th, 2025. Welcome to the Town of Woodfin Board of Adjustment Planning, uh, meeting. This time I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, I'd like to ask that everyone attending this meeting, please place your phones on silence so we do not disrupt the meeting. I'd like to now like to take role to certify the board quorum. Uh, Mr. Hanson.
Present.
Mr. Valentine.
Present.
Mr. Deroni.
Present.
Mr. Hopkins.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Present.
Mr. Hayes, present. That being said, we'll move on to the first topic tonight, which is approval of the minutes from September. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from September? Any questions, concerns?
Nope. Motionally approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I want to make sure, Mr. Valentine, was your name added on there? I think you, you said, was you missing on the present?
This is for the December one.
Correct, yeah.
So you said September, didn't you?
Oh, I read what was on here, sorry.
Okay, I'll ask Marie.
December.
December, December.
December. Everybody's good with, uh, December meetings. So I was here, but I'm not on the minutes.
Okay.
So we should add that.
Okay, so I can get Marie to add that, get his name added. Uh, otherwise, or the minutes fine as far as the content goes and we can just, I'll make sure that gets added.
That's fine.
Yep. Okay.
All right. Okay, uh, public comment.
So do you need to approve the agenda?
I'm sorry. Uh, we have to approve the adjustment?
Approve the, approve the minute, the agenda itself. Are y'all okay with the agenda as it's set?
Everybody any questions on the agenda for tonight?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved.
Okay.
On order, agenda, minutes. Okay, public comment.
We don't have anybody else here. The only person I have here is the applicants themselves, uh, but nobody else.
Open the pu- meeting to public and we'll close the meeting to public.
Correct.
Unfinished business, we have none. Uh, new business, administrative review. Administrative, you want me, you want to go ahead and read this?
I, I can read it for you if you want to.
Go ahead.
All right. So, um, if y'all recall, we have a, a, a major subdivision and y'all had approved earlier this summer, uh, before all we went through with Helene, uh, the concept plan. And so you go through a concept plan for a major subdivision, comes to this board, they take into the preliminary plat, and then they'll come to Planning Board Adjustment and then go to Town Council. And then the final plat, when you actually create lots, will just come through staff, which will be my, myself and Marie. So that's where we're, we're in the middle step here on the administrative review. So the request is an administrative or ministerial review of a preliminary plat for a 19 lot major subdivision located on three parcels that total 2.8 acres. And this is located just, uh, east of Destination Lane, uh, for Desperate Lane was the, uh, former address. And then we have, uh, three tax pin numbers. I'll just read them. 9629 dash 65 dash 5672, 9629 dash 65 dash 4520, and 9629 dash 65 dash 4447. So moving forward, so we have one exhibit here. You probably do remember this. It's, looks basically the same, uh, as way of orientation. Destination Drive is on the left, uh, runs kind of north, northeast. Uh, the upper right-hand corner is View Street, which is a state maintained road that's in unincorporated Buncombe County. And then Ben Lippin Road runs down here along the front. It's got Draven Mountain Road, but that's Ben Lippin. And then you see kind of this fish hook is in gray, is a new road. They're going to work through the county addressing coordinator to name that. They'll have to get that in and work that fish hook. Uh, it terminates in a, what we call myself, a hammerhead turnaround. That's just an acceptable way to either do a cul-de-sac or for fire trucks or a garbage truck to get in out of the subdivision. The other notable changes in here is a split, uh, the open space in half. Let me see here. I think I may have a another plan in here, but I'll come back to it. But they have this open space in the kind of the upper right-hand corner of Lot 19, uh, needed to switch here. For the area context here, you have again unzoned Buncombe County to the right here, east. R3 zoning to the south Buncombe County. The dark blue is the city of Asheville. That's actually a Leida Homes property. And then the teal copper, teal color, which includes this parcel is Mountain Village. Uh, that's part of Crest Mountain and that's in the Town of Woodfin. So you can kind of see there's like four types of jurisdictional classifications happening here. Uh, the R10 is actually also Town of Woodfin as well. So we have a few satellite annexations in there too that were voluntary. So it's quite busy area for zoning jurisdictions. Then for, uh, Exhibit B, the aerial, uh, again, you see the unzoned Buncombe County to the east, city of Asheville and Woodfin. And you see it's basically a pattern of detached, single-family homes, uh, on moderate, small lots, the, the village, uh, or Verde, what is that, uh, Reese, what y'all call it? It's just the village at Crest Mountain? Yeah, those at Crest Mountain, very small lots. These lots themselves will basically be mimic that pattern with four or 5,000 square foot lots. And that's kind of what you see at the villages. So a similar lot layout. And then the future, uh, land use map of the area shows as cluster residential, which again, this kind of makes sense with Mountain Village. Uh, they're leaving about half acre of open space with the balance of the property in, uh, residential land uses. And then I want to get back here. Let me back out. I think I trying to get, uh, I might have the...
May I ask a question while you're looking for them?
Yeah.
So I see that Desperation Lane is there.
Correct.
Why do we need the turnaround, the hammerhead, as you say, since it looks like it just connects to Desperation Lane and becomes just a loop?
Thought they were getting rid of that road. I thought that was...
Was that it?
Talked about in the last meeting.
Okay. Better memory than I, you're younger.
Yeah.
You have more hair on top.
Yeah. Desperate Lane, that right-of-way would have to be closed via action through Town Council. So you can't claim it. Uh, and it, without a legal opinion, and I am, I'm not an attorney, the assumption is if you abut the property, either property owner that butts it can use that right-of-way. And it would be intended for, um, you know, vehicular or some sort of conveyance in that right-of-way. So that right-of-way runs kind of in this area and runs kind of south, southwest back to, uh, Ben Lippin Road.
Right. It looks like it kind of heads up to View Street.
Yep. There, there was an old driveway, the, the Mobile Home Park.
Okay.
Drive came in this way. There's still some old gravel in here.
Okay.
And it kind of made a S-turn and, and followed down.
Yeah, you can see the root of it down there.
Yeah. And you see on some aerial photos, I can bring those up.
Yeah, I've got that.
But from the southwest west from the Hammerhead, that is going to be basically abandoned, we'll call it.
Yeah, that'll be more or less, uh, maybe some gravel. When I've been out there, I've parked it. I'm able to pull up just about right in here. And then it kind of fades to this like mixture of grass and gravel. It doesn't look like somewhere that I would normally want to drive my vehicle without wondering if I was going to get stuck or get on some nails or, you know, poke a hole in a tire. It, it definitely wasn't a gravel driveway to me. And I would assume that as they do developments, potential that they could come in this way to do the grading for the development. I believe too that you would full expect with the size of the lots, I was telling the neighbors, it may not be mass grading initially, but the lots will essentially all be graded out 100%. Uh, you would have to denude them to build a house on these lots. There's no real practical way that you could probably save a tree or avoid some sort of land disturbance for the majority of the lots in, in reality. Uh, but we don't review grading. Uh, the biggest thing for us, for the grading numbers, to know if you're disturbing an acre for stormwater triggering. So we want to make sure, which in this case, they're already providing a stormwater device. So that's not a concern here. Uh, if they were to, going to have to do one or not do one, uh, the applicant's already saying, we know we have to do stormwater. We'll, when we get into, uh, the actual development phase, once the preliminary plat is approved, our stormwater administrator will actually get in and start looking at those detailed calculations like how much impervious area is being created by the roadway, each individual house, each individual, individual driveway, where is that water going? What are those calculations? How big is this device? Will it hold that storm event? And where's that discharge happening? And, but he's already had those numbers, so, uh, but that's, that's essentially what we'd be looking. So we won't be just looking at this impervious area. We'll be looking at the final projected impervious area for the project. So that's kind of in a nutshell, the, the preliminary plat. Again, reminder, Mountain Village has no minimum lot size for lot area, no minimum setbacks. So there's a zero setback from the zoning. There's also no minimum, uh, road frontage for each individual lot. Uh, it does make it a very flexible district. So as you can see, our lots are 4,700 square feet, 4,100 square feet, 3,800 square feet. Uh, but if you've been to the village at Crest Mountain, you can see those homes are more of a cottage style kind of centered, centered around the green. And I think that's what's being replicated here.
What is, uh, Lot 19, um, become? And does it end up, uh, with an access off of View Street?
Yeah, I think, uh, they can create it. It's a public street, so Lot 19, uh, it, it could, at this point, we don't have it. Is, I anticipate it to be a single-family lot. Uh, the one thing to keep in mind though, and we'll make sure the applicant knows this, uh, when we get further down the street is uh, 20 units triggers a CZ. So right now we have 19 lots. It's 19 dwelling units. If Lot 19 were to come back in a year from now, they want to do a duplex or a triplex there. That's going to throw us over the 20-unit count because this is an active development. Then we're going to have to kind of like stop and, and call timeout and come back for a CZ for the project. Uh, so there's not a way to piecemeal around, but I see it is a bigger lot. Uh, they cut that open space area in half that you've seen before and made Lot 19. But one of the benefits was, is one of the lots, uh, I think this was Lot 19 was here. And so they folded this area from the former lot into the open space. And it gives the actual residents in this development, everybody the ability to come in on the walking trail with road frontage and access uh, the open space area, uh, by, by foot. Whereas these front half lots didn't have that benefit before. So in a way, this is actually a better layout because there's equal opportunity for everybody in the development without either getting in a car and driving around or having to ask a neighbor for permission to get to this open space area. So you see the walking trail here. So that is...
Can't read it from here. What's just roughly a lot size length?
I, I'd say they're running around 3,600 to 4,300 square feet.
I mean, 50 by 6, I mean, how, just, just an average, just a...
35 by 40.
37.
Yeah.
Okay.
There, yeah.
Question is the, the, the four lots on the southwest side, they go out the bottom street? That's all the driveways?
Yeah, that was one, the one question staff had was just to be at least recommend a shared driveways to try to mitigate the number of, uh, conflict points with people turning in and out. And so there's four lots. So I would expect that they're going to come out onto Ben Lippin Road and I would just hope for, you know, a shared driveway here, maybe a shared driveway here or some way.
That it's two.
No more than two driveways. And it could be that lot.
Busy road.
Yeah. Lot 5 could come out this way. There's no way that I can authorize somebody over here to cross over the street. It, it would be kind of potentially with this property in here, uh, it's not part of the development. So we'd anticipate, you know, each lot having a driveway. The, the DOT doesn't regulate individual residential driveways. So individual house, they're looking at commercial driveways and this road connection is considered a commercial driveway connection. So NC DOT will be looking at this driveway permit for the road connection. So...
Oh, I see. There, there's not a regulation on...
Not, not typically, no, no, there's not one. So an individual, single-family house, that's, each one could have it. You don't need a permit from DOT for that. It, it's really the subdivision processes where you determine how many lots can access a state road. So with that, is there any other questions on the plat?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what is the rough size of the homes that we own these lots?
I, yeah.
Price possibly?
Well, I don't know. I have to probably ask the applicant to speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah, on that one, Reese.
I'm Reese and this is Jan.
And Reese, if you'll come up here just, just to come, that way, because, uh, it won't pick up.
And if you don't mind, can you just please, with the microphones, state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Reese Lasher. I live at 19 Meadow Glen Drive in Weberville. And also have the Crest Mountain Development, both Crest Mountain Commercial Properties as well as the villages at Crest Mountain. And so I acquired this property, uh, years ago because we wanted to create kind of a transitional piece, more affordable housing between what we had in the villages and some, uh, what I'll call less than desirable housing that was down the way. And I cleaned it up and, uh, basically worked on a development plan originally. Believe it or not, it was way more than 19 lots. We could put a lot in there under Mountain Village, which allowed up to 17 per acre. But with the, um, review, both from a stormwater perspective as well as the major subdivision requirements, we did reduce to 19 lots. And it makes it more compatible with our villages. The difference is in our villages, we require green building. We require a lot of things and have dues and things like that that make it more expensive. So to get a more affordable product, uh, here, uh, we had to separate it, not make it part of the villages. And they don't really want it to be part of the villages. To be specific in your question, you can figure 1,500 square feet, probably no more than 2,000 square feet on any one home. And the only ones I could see ever getting to 2,000 might be two-story home rather than a one-story home. And so price points in today's market, 4,450, uh, plus or minus, depending on what somebody would want to build there. I don't have a prototype today to give you a exact square foot.
You, you don't have models of homes?
We have, uh, spec homes that we build like in the villages that have to be a minimum of 1,000 square feet and go up. But this community, uh, it doesn't have that requirement under Mountain Village.
So you, you would view this then as more affordable housing?
Yes.
Which is what is going to be of interest to the town council, I'm sure.
Yeah, uh, I had met with the mayor at the time and we talked about that. But see, they don't have to have the dues that the villages have. They don't have gates, things like that. So they don't have to do, um, hardy siding, things like that. So there's just a fair amount of expense when you do a green-built home. Probably if somebody's a builder, they'd understand this, but it's about 15 to 25% that we add to those home in the villages. So those price points start right around 500 in the villages.
Do you have a, a style of home in mind? You know, you see a lot of those developments right now where they're individ- not, not, um, subdivision type homes, but just the individual homes that, uh, right now have the type of roof that's like one, one slats of a peak. That you, you see tons of, they, they actually, I mean, they look...
Some look great.
They got a good mix of variety of shapes and sizes and that.
Yeah, we...
I don't know if you're, if you had anything in mind of what the book...
Well, if you drive up the road, uh, there's a little four to five unit, uh, development that's already in there. Uh, that's little one-story homes. It looks something like that, but I don't think they'd be the very modern homes like you're describing. I think it'd be more, uh, traditional housing. Again, that ultimately would be subject to each lot's dimensions and the home that it would be holding. You know, to maximize the, uh, because with tight lots, it's, that's our biggest problem at Crest. We run into this a lot. Uh, making it work with trying to have everybody have a driveway and not looking in somebody's next door window. So we do heavy landscaping up there as a way of controlling that.
And you just answered another question I had. So they will, they'll all have their own driveway. That's, that's where the parking would be.
Yeah, unless it's a shared driveway, you might have a shared like we talked on those four. This is the same plan that we looked at before. There are no changes that I'm aware of.
Okay, I was gonna ask.
Yeah, it's the same plan. So we...
For that 19.
Yeah. The only, uh, the only thing in the, in the final is when, when you get in the field, you might run into field conditions that make you shift things a little bit. And when you got four across the front and we got to get that to comply with DOT's requirements, if we have to shift that a little bit, whether it's that or that pre-existing easement, I'm willing to do that. And I may have to move that lot somewhere else. Those three could, it could be, four could become three and that other one drop down if, if, if it's required. So that'd be the only thing I can think of today unless something happens out there that, that we don't know about till you start moving, uh, moving the dirt. We think it's going to be a really good project, really. And, uh, I think, uh, being affordable and being single-family and a nice transition for us, it's a lot better, a lot better than what it was. And that's probably why it was named Desperate Lane years ago.
Be more like, uh, starter homes.
I think so. Starter or finishing homes. Most would be one-story, I would think. You know, we see that a lot where people just don't want to deal with stairs at, at our age. So...
You got Ricky with, uh, the naming conventions, Fish Hook Lane, Hammerhead Drive. I don't know. All kinds of ideas.
That was Ricky just came up with it. I hadn't called it a fish hook before, but we'll come up with something and we really don't want Desperate Lane. So we want it to go away. So we're going to move on that at some point. But the villages is going to do a new fence. I don't know if they told you that, that they're going to do a new fence right along Destination Drive. So once they do that, then, you know, then I can do something, maybe permanent there. So...
So are you, are you just selling the lots or you're going to build each of the houses too?
I sell the lots.
Okay.
Yeah. So I wouldn't be adverse parking or working with somebody depending on, my son-in-law is a builder. He does most of the homes at Crest. But as a rule, Brook Green or Reese and Jan, we just do the, uh, lots.
Okay. What about the rough utilities? Is there, um, sewer, water?
Yeah, that's a good question. Let me point that out to you. Ricky, you might help with your arrow here. Uh, because I'll put my glasses on. That's why I wear them.
You've got like some pump, everything's pumping back this way.
Uh, we actually have an existing sewer line in there. And I had extended it from the villages. It's the only reason you could get sewer to this property because you didn't have gravity. And the MSD doesn't allow the pump stations now.
Yeah.
So we are going to extend the existing sewer line, which I can point on this map, but I don't know.
Yeah, you point and I'll show it.
It's about right here.
Okay.
And it'll extend out to here to pick up service to these last lots. Okay?
Yeah, I think that's the manhole.
And so it's really only, uh, I think 100 feet of sewer line extension.
I would you come.
The taps are there.
Oh, yeah, here it is. I'll point out. It's, there's a manhole right here. It comes northeast, runs parallels of the road right here.
It's an SS's.
Yeah, SS, then comes back here and then it runs to the north back toward.
And then the city ran a new water line.
And that runs along the edge here.
Ben Lippin Road or Draven Mountain Road that stops right at Lot 2.
Yeah.
In fact, they left the tap there for us. So we'll have to bring the water line in from there along the road.
Yeah.
And there's actually a connection at the intersection of Lots 13 and 14 where that is, that's going to be an easement to run the line down to get to 19.
That's Asheville City Water, not Woodfin?
City Water.
Okay.
Nashville City Water.
We're not across the river. I didn't think we were.
Yeah, we, we have Spivey Mountains, our gravity-fed system. So it's, it's been tough, you know, with the Helene because Spivey is one of the last ones to fill in the system. Oh, yeah. Which is already in there, but it'll have to be upgraded, you know, for this lots.
Right, okay.
Any other questions for me?
Looking good.
Well, thank you very much. We're, we're glad to finally get this going. And, uh, I, like I say, I think it'll be good for, for the community.
Great, yeah. All right.
Do we have any other questions?
The boss, I think, is more the...
Any other questions for Ricky or any other questions or discussion you want to talk about in general? Concerns, questions, concerns?
No.
I would just interested in affordable housing aspect.
Uh, just out of curiosity, I'm assuming this is not an HOA then if you're...
It will have an HOA.
It will have an HOA, okay.
In fact, I have to meet with council and do the whole setup of that because they have to maintain the stormwater systems.
Yeah. So if you want to talk, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I should have.
Yeah, yeah.
There, there will be an HOA setup.
Okay.
That's primarily responsible for maintaining the stormwater system. After we, you know, we sell out, we're gone, but they're still there. So they have to...
So the roads are going to be dedicated to Woodfin?
Woodfin Roads.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I guess that was one of the changes because Woodfin went to 20 feet of asphalt, correct? We originally designed this with 18 feet, but now we have to go 20 feet of asphalt to comply.
Yeah. The only thing I'll say about public roads is that, yeah, to, one of the things we mentioned to him was you have to do 20-foot of asphalt to be eligible for the town to accept it. So once it gets toward the end and the roads are paved and a substantial amount of the development is built out, uh, then Reese would then petition Town Council for acceptance of streets. Now that's up. It's kind of a discretionary decision by Town Council. So they could take it on. Uh, they could not take it on. If it doesn't, then obviously he's fortunately has a POA that would then take on maintenance of it. But I think doing the road, not having steep road grades, having a turnaround at the end, having the right width, having a sufficient density in there, obviously not being gated, would be elements the council's looking for on that. Uh, but there's a new policy that got adopted about a year ago on it. And that's, fortunately, we had that in mind, so we could let Reese know about it.
Yeah. And I think that for the, the safety of the, the neighborhood, the fact that it doesn't connect back through to Desperation Lane, that there's that break there and, and or Desperate Lane.
Yeah.
That keeps it a, a dead end, which is a safer, you know, if there's not a way out.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a safer.
Yeah. If you recall, I think there was a lot of neighbors in the, in the Destination Drive area that didn't want this development. And they worked with, uh, Reese during the concept plan before we actually seen it to actually bringing it off Ben Lippin as opposed to coming off Destination. So that was one of the the good things about having the, this process is that they were able to gauge him early on before he got into significant design expense. So with that, I mean, uh, staff, I reviewed it, uh, and we basically recommended approval of the plat. The only thing that I would say that, and that can be addressed at some point between now and the final plat would be just to note that the open space is clearly just that. It can never be for future construction. I run across that from time to time from old plats, 34 years ago. There's some ambiguity. It's like, can, is this open? Is it reserved? What is this? Uh, we just would like to, I can't really, I'll say this, I can't require it to only be two driveways. Our code doesn't have that ability, but we'd like to see that if they would agree to at some point, put some sort of restriction to only have two driveways on, uh, Ben Lippin for safety. And then there's a reference about Desperate Lane to be claimed. And as I mentioned, you have to go through a right-of-way closure to, to extinguish right-of-ways. You can't just claim them by plat. But we can get that very minor as far as plat, get that cleared up in the process.
We're not addressing that in tonight's action.
No.
Down the road, next stage.
And what is, by the time I get to the final plat, that's when the rubber really meets the road. That's the legal document that gets recorded.
Just one other, out of curiosity, open space.
Uh-huh.
Um, if they, as an HOA or whatever in the future, they decide they want to put a swing pool or they want to put a basketball courts or a clubhouse, they're not allowed to do that then, right?
basketball courts or a clubhouse, they're not allowed to do that then, right? Open space means undeveloped?
Well, it, open space could be, you know, the walking trail, it could be a playground. I, or if it was to be like some recreation or sports court, I don't know if we would necessarily prohibit that because it'd be active. Uh, a small picnic shelter, I think would not be a problem. I think we'd have to, you know, look at that. But I think if it's community, a mentee, I don't think we would be adverse to that. Uh, uh, one this size probably wouldn't fit a community center or a neighbor, uh, uh, area forum, but maybe a small picnic shelter could go in, a 10-by-10 little shelter, you'd probably squeeze in there. But yeah, if you had somewhere that was like an Olive Ad or like Crest Mountain, where there's could be five or 10 acres available, yeah, that would fit in, walking trails. What we wouldn't wanna see is it split, subdivided further.
Thank you. Would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Conveniently.
I move to approve the preliminary subdivision plat for 2.8 acres as shown on Exhibit 1, and which complies with the technical requirements of Chapter 46 subdivisions.
I second. Motion.
Ricky, you're good with the way that was read?
That's fine, yes. He had the witch.
Hey, let's take, uh, look, Mr. Hanson. Approved. Mr. Valentine.
Approved.
Mr. Duroni.
Approved.
Mr. Hopkins.
Approved.
Mr. Young.
Approved.
Mr. Hayes, approved. Congratulations, Mr. Davis. Good luck.
And that, that was the only item we had for tonight, so...
I'd like to move, will you adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Approved. You adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.